Everybody likes it when the power goes out, especially when they get a busy signal trying to report an outage. Well, the City of Stillwater has unveiled a new phone system where customers can easily call one phone number for electric, water, and sewer outages. The number to call is (405) 372-3292, and you can call 24 hours a day. This is an automated system designed to recognize your phone number and easily pinpoint the problem at hand. So make sure your phone number is updated on your utility account. To verify our changes' phone number on your account, call Utility Customer Service at[34.90][34.90](405) 742-8258.
City of Stillwater Television transmits programming 24 hours each day throughout the Stillwater and surrounding area on Sunday Communications Channel 23 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. The purpose of the station is to provide the latest news and information about Stillwater City Government and its services, as well as information on city events. Live broadcasts of the Stillwater City Council, Stillwater Utilities Authority, Stillwater Economic Development Authority, and Stillwater Planning Commission air on this station, and replays of these meetings can be found here daily and on demand at stillwater.org. For more information or if you have questions, contact the Office of Marketing and Public Relations at (405) 742-8362, or email news@stillwater.org.
for me to leave my shelter?" Well, in years past, a long time ago in the 1960s, they used to use the "all-clear" sign to let people know that an error had passed. But now, in today's time, we use the storm sirens to let you know that there is a warning. We will never activate the system to let you know that there is an all-clear because it creates confusion. So, what we will do to let you know that an all-clear is present and that it is safe for you to come out of your shelter is we will activate the public address system. We will let you know that the threat that was occurring has passed and it is safe for you to come out of your shelter. We will also broadcast over KOSU Radio, 91.7 FM and 88.3 FM, and let you know that it is an all-clear from our office. So remember, when you go to your storm shelter, take your radio.
Did you know, as a resident of Stillwater and an Oklahoman, that your first line of defense should be a NOAA Weather Radio? NOAA Weather Radios are activated by the National Weather Service in Norman. They send out critical weather information, letting people in the communities in Oklahoma know what is happening. If you have a severe thunderstorm come through, wouldn't it be nice to know about hail, high winds, possible flooding, as well as tornado warnings that can be affecting your community? As first line of defense, your NOAA Weather Radio will provide you the same information that we receive here in this office. NOAA Weather Radios can be purchased throughout town: Radio Shack, Lowe's, Walmart. They all carry these radios. And they can be programmed by our office and office staff. So if you purchase a radio, want to be alert, want to be informed, bring your radio to our office, we'll program it for you, and you'll be ready for the next storm. If you have questions about any of the information we talked about today, please visit the website at stillwater.org/SECCC, or you can call the office at (405) 372-7484, and we'd be more than happy to help you.
The City of Stillwater presents to you the six ways to pay your utility bill. Number one, pay by mail by using the return envelope included with your bill to send your check. Remember to return the stub from your bill to ensure proper credit. Number two, pay by person at one of the customer service windows located at City Hall from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Number three, pay by slipping a payment in one of the two drop boxes, either outside the front entrance of City Hall or at the 8th Avenue entrance to the parking lot across from City Hall. Number four, pay by credit card. Number five, pay by using automatic bank drafting. This service pays your bill directly from your checking or savings account. Number six, pay your bill online at stillwater.org and select Pay Utility Bill.
Street sweeping is an important task to keep city streets in Stillwater clean. But the purpose for this is not just keeping the streets looking clean, it is also to provide safe conditions for the entire city. It reduces health hazards related to dust and prevents trash from being a refuge for insects and rodents. Regular sweeping around the city also improves storm water quality by preventing the accumulation of debris and sudden discharges into the streams, lakes, and other waterways. Street sweepers are out cleaning the streets Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Citizens can help the street sweepers do their jobs by removing objects like trashcans, vehicles, basketball hoops, and other obstructions off the streets on your scheduled day the sweepers come into your area.
Hello, I'm Officer Howell with the Stillwater Police Department. We just want to tell citizens that no dumpster in the City of Stillwater is for public use, and that each one of these, including trash carts, are assigned to a residence or business. A person cannot dump trash into another one's trash receptacle. This is considered illegal dumping. If a person is caught doing this, he or she is subject to a fine of up to $540. Each dumpster and trash cart within city limits is assigned to someone who is paying for trash and recycling services, and there are no public dumpsters. So please, dispose of your trash properly, and here are ways to dispose of excess trash.
If you do have excessive trash, there are ways you can dispose of it besides dumping into someone else's trash bin or dumpster. You could trade in your blue cart for a larger cart or request for an additional cart. Just call (405) 742-8269 to do this. Purchase any blue bags at any On-Q Express store in Stillwater or at the Convenience Collection Center located at 807 South Perkins Road. You can also take your trash or recyclables to the Convenience Collection Center. The city will help you in any way to assure that your services are taken care of.
Hi, I'm Officer Elliott with the Stillwater Police Department. I'm here to remind you to drive safely and courteously on the streets of Stillwater. Our team of excellent officers are committed to serving and protecting you whenever you're in need. Stay away from distractions while driving, like texting, loud music, and other chores. You pose a threat not only to yourself, but to the other citizens on the roadway.
Have a parking or traffic ticket? Ticket holders can pay their tickets online through the Municipal Court Online Payments website. Visit stillwater.org and click on the "Pay Ticket" tab to be directed to the payments website. Parking tickets are accessible 24 hours after they are issued. Traffic tickets are accessible five to seven days after they are issued. Or pay your tickets in person at the municipal court counter in the municipal building or at a city drop box. For more information, contact Municipal Court at (405) 742-8253.
Hi, I'm Tom Bradley. I'm the Fire Chief for the Stillwater Fire Department. Every year in January, we offer a contract for the rural fire services. Outside the corporate city limits for Stillwater, we're obligated by ordinance to charge for our services. These charges can be rather expensive depending on the nature and the seriousness of the fire. It's not uncommon for a structured fire to exceed $4,000 for our services depending on the number of apparatus and manpower that goes out to the fire scene. For just $100 per year, you can ensure that any emergency services provided to you on your property will not exceed $2,000. We offer a rural fire contract for $100 per year. It's available at 1510 South Main Street, Stillwater, Oklahoma, or you can find the contract online at stillwater.org under the Fire Department under Contracts. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call, and have a fire safe day.
Sign up for the City of Stillwater's new emergency and community notification system, Be Informed Stillwater. This state-of-the-art mass notification system is designed to keep Stillwater residents, businesses, and others informed of emergencies and certain community events. To sign up for the service, go to stillwater.org and find the Be Informed Stillwater button at the bottom of the page. There you'll find instructions on how to sign up and information on frequently asked questions about the service. When signing up, you may enter up to 10 phone numbers and email addresses in your profile. The system will notify you by the following methods which you can choose for your profile: voice, email, or text message. Notifications include imminent threats to health, safety, and welfare for community such as wildfires, floods, and severe weather events. You'll also have the option to choose to receive non-emergency alerts and informational bulletins on city news and topics that interest you. For additional questions, email beinformedstw@stillwater.org or call (405) 533-8590. Don't have computer access at home to sign up for Be Informed Stillwater? No problem! Visit the Stillwater Public Library at 1107 South Doug Street and speak to a librarian at the help desk. They will be more than happy to assist you.
Hi, I'm Blake Shaw of the City of Stillwater. Here are some friendly tips to make sure your trash and recycling carts will be picked up on your scheduled pickup day. First, have your carts out by 6:00 AM. Make sure there's five feet from your cart, and make sure that the lids are closed to ensure that your carts will be picked up. For more information, you can visit the City of Stillwater's website at stillwater.org.
Nobody likes it when the power goes out, especially when they get a busy signal trying to report an outage. Well, the City of Stillwater has unveiled a new phone system where customers can easily call one phone number for electric, water, and sewer outages. The number to call is (405) 372-3292, and you can call 24 hours a day. This is an automated system designed to recognize your phone number and easily pinpoint the problem at hand. So make sure your phone number is updated on your utility account. To verify our changes' phone number on your account, call Utility Customer Service at[1608.86][1608.86](405) 742-8258.
City of Stillwater Television transmits programming 24 hours each day throughout the Stillwater and surrounding area on Sunday Communications Channel 23 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. The purpose of the station is to provide the latest news and information about Stillwater City Government and its services, as well as information on city events. Live broadcasts of the Stillwater City Council, Stillwater Utilities Authority, Stillwater Economic Development Authority, and Stillwater Planning Commission air on this station, and replays of these meetings can be found here daily and on demand at stillwater.org. For more information or if you have questions, contact the Office of Marketing and Public Relations at (405) 742-8362, or email news@stillwater.org. Mark your calendars for the 37th Annual Stillwater Arts Festival held in downtown Stillwater on April 19th and 20th. Come out on Saturday, April 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, April 20th from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and enjoy the arts festival featuring many local and regional artists, food vendors, live entertainment, and more. Admission to the festival is free. The Stillwater Arts Festival is organized and presented by the City of Stillwater, held rain or shine.
Hi, Stillwater. My name is Rob Hill, and I'm the Emergency Management Technician for the City of Stillwater. And today, I'd like to talk to you about storm sirens and our outdoor warning systems for the City of Stillwater, and what it means to you as a resident. Lots of times after we have an activation, we receive phone calls in our office about why I can't hear the storm sirens in my house. Well, let's cover that. First of all, the outdoor warning systems are designed for people outdoors. During the springtime and summertime, lots of people recreate outdoors, have outside jobs, participate in ballgames, camp at lakes, and those people are the people that we're trying to reach to notify that severe weather is threatening the area. So when you call and you say that you can't hear the storm sirens in your house, technically the storm sirens are not meant to be heard indoors. Many times, people are concerned, "What do I do when I hear the storm sirens?" When the storm sirens go off for the City of Stillwater, it means that we want you to take immediate action to protect yourselves, your family, and your friends. It doesn't mean go to the TV, turn the TV on, and find out what's going on. It doesn't mean get on your iPhone or your cell phone and surf the web, or go to the computer and find out what's going on. It means that there is a life-threatening emergency, and we need you to take action immediately to save your life. Many of you have called and asked us, "What is the announcement after the storm sirens have activated?" Well, in years past, people had concerns, just like yourselves, about, "Is this a real emergency, or is this a test? Are they doing maintenance?" So we sat down and came up with an answer. After every activation for a life-threatening emergency, we would activate a public address system. This address will tell you who has activated the system, what the emergency is, and what City of Stillwater television transmits programming 24 hours each day throughout the Stillwater and surrounding area on Sunlink Communications Channel 23 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. The purpose of the station is to provide the latest news and information about Stillwater City Government and its services, as well as information on city events. Live broadcasts of the Stillwater City Council, Stillwater Utilities Authority, Stillwater Economic Development Authority, and Stillwater Planning Commission air on this station, and replays of these meetings can be found here daily and on demand at stillwater.org. For more information or if you have questions, contact the Office of Marketing and Public Relations at 405-742-8362 or email news@stillwater.org. Mark your calendars for the 37th Annual Stillwater Arts Festival held in downtown Stillwater on April 19th and 20th. Come out on Saturday, April 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and Sunday, April 20th from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and enjoy the Arts Festival featuring many local and regional artists, food vendors, live entertainment, and more. Admission to the festival is free. The Stillwater Arts Festival is organized and presented by the City of Stillwater, held rain or shine.
Hi, Stillwater. My name is Rob Hill, and I'm the Emergency Management Technician for the City of Stillwater. And today I'd like to talk to you about storm sirens and our outdoor warning systems for the City of Stillwater and what it means to you as a resident. Lots of times after we have an activation, we receive phone calls in our office about why I can't hear the storm sirens in my house. Well, let's cover that. First of all, the outdoor warning systems are designed for people outdoors. During the springtime and summertime, lots of people recreate outdoors, have outside jobs, participate in ballgames, camp at lakes, and those people are the people that we're trying to reach to notify that severe weather is threatening the area. So when you say, when you call and you say that you can't hear the storm sirens in your house, technically the storm sirens are not meant to be heard indoors. Many times people are concerned, "What do I do when I hear the storm sirens?" When the storm sirens go off for the City of Stillwater, it means that we want you to take immediate action to protect yourselves, your family, and your friends. It doesn't mean go to the TV, turn the TV on, and find out what's going on. It doesn't mean get on your iPhone or your cellphone and surf the web or go to the computer and find out what's going on. It means that there is a life-threatening emergency and we need you to take action immediately to save your life. Many of you have called and asked us, "What is the announcement after the storm sirens have activated?" Well, in years past, people had concerns, just like yourselves, about, "Is this a real emergency? Or is this a test? Are they doing maintenance?" So we sat down and came up with an answer. After every activation for a life-threatening emergency, we would activate a public address system. This address will tell you who has activated the system, what the emergency is, and what response you need to make as a citizen of Stillwater. So remember, when you hear the tornado sirens go off and you hear the announcement, it's a real emergency. And remember, the testing is done on the first Tuesday of every month at 11:30. And please, after the tornado sirens have activated for a real emergency, do not attempt to drive to a storm shelter. It's too late. Get in and get down. After a storm siren activation, many people want to know, "How do I know when it's safe for me to leave my shelter?" Well, in years past, a long time ago in the 1960s, they used to use the "All Clear" sign to let people know that an air raid had passed. But now, in today's time, we use the storm sirens to let you know that there is a warning. We will never activate the system to let you know that there is an "All Clear" because it creates confusion. So what we will do to let you know that an "All Clear" is present and that it is safe for you to come out of your shelter is we will activate the public address system. We will let you know that the threat that was occurring has passed and it is safe for you to come out of your shelter. We will also broadcast over KOSU Radio, 91.7 FM and 88.3 FM, and let you know that it is an "All Clear" from our office. So remember, when you go to your storm shelter, take your radio. Did you know as a resident of Stillwater and an Oklahoman that your first line of defense should be a NOAA Weather Radio? NOAA Weather Radios are activated by the National Weather Service in Norman. They send out critical weather information, letting people in the communities in Oklahoma know what is happening. If you have a severe thunderstorm come through, wouldn't it be nice to know about hail, high winds, possible flooding, as well as tornado warnings that can be affecting your community? As first line of defense, your NOAA Weather Radio will provide you the same information that we receive here in this office. NOAA Weather Radios can be purchased throughout town. Radio Shack, Lowe's, Walmart, they all carry these radios. And they can be programmed by our office and office staff. So if you purchase a radio, want to be alert, want to be informed, bring your radio to our office, we'll program it for you, and you'll be ready for the next storm. If you have questions about any of the information we talked about today, please visit the website at stillwater.org/SECCC, or you can call the office at 405-372-7484, and we'd be more
The City of Stillwater presents to you the six ways to pay your utility bill. Number one, pay by mail by using the return envelope included with your bill to send your check. Remember to return the stuff from your bill to ensure proper credit. Number two, pay by person at one of the customer service windows located at City Hall from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Number three, pay by slipping a payment in one of the two drop boxes either outside the front entrance of City Hall or at the 8th Avenue entrance to the parking lot across from City Hall. Number four, pay by credit card. Number five, pay by using automatic bank drafting. This service pays your bill directly from your checking or savings account. Number six, pay your bill online at stillwater.org and select Pay Utility Bill.
Street sweeping is an important task to keep city streets in Stillwater clean, but the purpose for this is not just keeping the streets looking clean, it is also to provide safe conditions for the entire city. It reduces health hazards related to dust and prevents trash from being a refuge for insects and rodents. Regular sweeping around the city also
Regular sweeping around the city also improves storm water quality by preventing the accumulation of debris and sudden misdischarge into the streams, lakes, and other waterways. Street sweepers are out cleaning the streets Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Citizens can help the street sweepers do their jobs by removing objects like trashcans, vehicles, basketball hoops, and other obstructions off the streets on your scheduled day the sweepers come into your area.
Hello, I'm Officer Howell with the Stillwater Police Department. We just want to tell citizens that no dumpster in the City of Stillwater is for public use, and that each one of these, including trash carts, are assigned to a residence or business. A person cannot dump trash into another one's trash receptacle. This is considered illegal dumping. If a person is caught doing this, he or she is subject to a fine of up to $540. Each dumpster and trash cart within city limits is assigned to someone who is paying for trash and recycling services, and there are no public dumpsters. So please, dispose of your trash properly, and here are ways to dispose of excess trash.
If you do have excessive trash, there are ways you can dispose of it besides dumping it into someone else's trash bin or dumpster. You could trade in your blue cart for a larger cart, or request for an additional cart. Just call (405) 742-8269 to do this. Purchase any blue bags at any OnQ Express store in Stillwater, or at the Convenience Collection Center located at 807 South Perkins Road. You can also take your trash or recyclables to the Convenience Collection Center. The city will help you in any way to assure that your services are taken care of.
Good evening, everyone. We have lots of folks in the house for lots of special presentations. But to start, we're going to call our meeting to order. Call the meeting to order for the April 7th, 2014 City Council Meeting, and we are honored to have Sidney Wade from Highland Park that's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Wade?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Now, Ms. Wade, oh, you don't get off that easy. Going back to the podium. Hey, we're going to ask you a couple of questions, just get to know you a little bit. What is your favorite subject?
Math.
Math, alright. And who's your teacher?
Ms. Missel.
What's her name?
Ms. Missel.
Ms. Missel, wonderful. And you're at Highland Park in 4th grade?
Mm-hmm.
What do you think of the new school?
It's pretty good.
Pretty good. Did you hear that cut?
Pretty good. No cut.
That's all you get. What else do you like to do besides math?
Uh, well, I like to read a lot.
You like to read? That's very good. Reading and math, bright future, bright future. Okay, and who brought you today?
My mom and my brother.
Your mom and your brother. Hello?
And Ms. Thompson.
That's wonderful. Do you got, oh, is your brother back here? Hey, baseball player?
Mm-hmm.
Baseball's good stuff. Okay, you guys got any questions for Sidney?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful, alright. I appreciate it. I've got a little something for you, and we're going to get a picture right down here. Okay, next on our agenda, we do have two proclamations. Our first one, Ms. Silver, if you'll join me for the Fair Housing Proclamation.
Whereas, April 16th, 2014 marks the 46th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familiar status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas, the City of Stillwater is committed to support the Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about their right to equal housing opportunities, and to help ensure every citizen of their right to fair housing. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, to hereby declare April 2014 as Fair Housing Month in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and urge all citizens to support fair housing throughout the year.
Thank you, Mayor Bartley, and as always, we try very hard to keep that in the forefront, and this is a reminder to our citizens that we are dedicated to fair housing in Stillwater.
And our second proclamation is in connection with the Distinguished Young Women, and Madison Weiser, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Whereas, the Distinguished Young Women of Payne County Scholarship Program is held every March to honor the best and brightest high school junior girls in Payne County. This countywide scholarship program recognizes rewards and encourages excellence while promoting self-esteem among those young women. The Distinguished Young Women of Payne County Program occurred on Saturday, March 8th, 2014, with six Payne County High School juniors participating, four from Stillwater, one from Perkins, and one from Cushing. And whereas, Ms. Madison Weiser, daughter of Mark and Angela Weiser of Stillwater, was selected as the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2015. And whereas, by being selected, the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2015, Ms. Weiser will be involved in community service, speaking engagements around Payne County, performing at various events, and presenting the "Be Your Best Self" message of self-confidence and commitment to Payne County schoolchildren. She will encourage young people to make a commitment to do their best to be involved, be studious, be healthy, be ambitious, and be responsible. It includes, but is not restricted to, encouraging young people as they face the challenges of dealing with negative peer pressure, and avoiding the perils of the abuse of alcohol and other drugs. And whereas, by being selected, the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2015, Ms. Weiser is automatically entered in the Distinguished Young Women of Oklahoma Scholarship Program to be held July 23rd through 26th, 2014 in Bartlesville. Ms. Weiser will compete for the Oklahoma State Title in the categories of fitness, interview, self-expression, talent, and scholastics. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, to hereby proclaim the 7th Day of April, 2014, as Madison Weiser Day.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Madison Weiser, like he said, and this is a phenomenal program. It was founded in 1958 in Mobile, Alabama, and is actually the largest and oldest national scholarship program for high school girls. It has provided life-changing experiences for more than 730,000 young women throughout the country, and more than $100 million in cash scholarships at the local, state, and national levels. In addition to cash scholarships, Distinguished Young Women participants are eligible for college-granted scholarships for almost 200 colleges and universities. More than $365 million in college scholarships were awarded this previous year, some of which include full tuition and board to numerous top-class institutions. Many participants leave the program with scholarships to help them with their college educations, but all of them walk away with friendships, life skills, and increased self-confidence, and I myself am definitely no exception. Distinguished Young Women strives to give every young woman the opportunity to further her education and prepare for a successful future.
That'll take us to the consent docket, and we have items A through E on the consent docket. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items from the consent docket? Is there a motion on the consent docket?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. And that is approved 5 to 0. Okay. I'm going to take a quick drink. Been reading too much.
That's right.
Okay, we've got a couple of special ceremonies, and the next part of our meeting is, you know, it's unique for this meeting of each year. And today, we are going to be honoring two very deserving people that have given their time, their energy, and their talents to our community, and we want to thank you. We really do thank you guys very much. And so that's what these next are about. And so, Counselor Scott, would you mind joining me down at the podium?
Whereas, Coda Gary Scott was first elected to the Stillwater City Council on March 1st, 2011, and served as counselor until April 7th, 2014. And whereas, Counselor Scott supported smart infrastructure development in improving the quality of life for all citizens, as evidenced by his advocacy for major water, sewer, and drainage utility revitalization programs, and his efforts to eliminate nuisances and streamlining of complaint processes. And whereas, during Counselor Scott's tenure, the City Council and SUA approved the GRDA Wholesale Power Purchase Agreement, revised critical portions of the SUA trust indenture, and modified the SUA facilities lease, approved franchise extensions for major communications providers, approved a corridor redevelopment plan, adopted the 2011 Building Codes, adopted major amendments to Land Development Code, a new zoning map, and design construction standards, and restructured administrative and board functions. And whereas, Counselor Scott has served with distinction, and is worthy of recognition from the community and his peers for his accomplishments as part of the City Council. Now therefore, the mayor and city councilors, and the citizens of Stillwater hereby recognize and express their appreciation for the dedication to duty and service provided by Counselor Coda Gary Scott, who has continued a tradition of service that has made Stillwater a community of excellence in Oklahoma.
Thank you very much. We also have a little question for you. It's got your name, just in case you forget.
Just in case I forget.
Alright, well, congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir. I'll be brief. Honorable Mayor, councilors, new folks coming to the horseshoe, I really thought a lot about it, you know, what could I say? But I've been called a little chatty a couple of times, being on council, so I decided tonight I would keep it brief. My friends, I don't have words to express the thanks that I have to the city staff, to my fellow councilors, and to all of the citizens that have came out, either in support or in opposition. It was both ways. Miguel and Pat, you guys stepped up, and you guys run the race, and you guys were elected. Congratulations. Before the council, you guys that are about to step on council, citizens is your first priority. I don't have to tell you guys that. So I guess my final words here tonight, what I took from this entire experience, Gandhi said it best. The very best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in service to others. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Vice Mayor Hopkins, would you mind joining me?
Yeah, you can lean all you want, I may start leaning here in a minute. Whereas, Charles Chuck Hopkins was first elected to the Stillwater City Council on April 1st, 2008, and was elected to a second term on April 5th, 2011. And whereas, Vice Mayor Hopkins has served as Central Oklahoma Economic Development District Representative, Stillwater Industrial Foundation Representative, Stillwater Economic Development Advisory Council Representative, and a member of the Land Development Code, Property Maintenance, Capital Improvement, and Annexation Subcommittee. And whereas, Vice Mayor Hopkins' commitment to long-range planning and infrastructure development has resulted in the adoption of the 2040 Water Project, the first Stillwater Annexation Plan, the COA Pipeline Study, implementation of the BEC Study, issuance of the 2009 OWRB Bonds funding the water system reconstruction, construction of the 56th Street Water Tower, execution of the GRDA Wholesale Power Agreement, critical amendments to Stillwater Utility Authority, and COA Reservoir 30 Trust Endentures, and numerous economic development initiatives, including the Downtown Business Improvement District. And whereas, Vice Mayor Hopkins was instrumental in the adoption of the 2010 Building Code Amendments, 2011 City Code Recodification, numerous amendments to the Land Development Code, and adoption of design and construction standards, commencement of the ongoing branding project, establishment of a regional ambulance service provider, 2009 and 2011 administrative and board restructuring efforts, corridor redevelopment plan, and becoming Oklahoma's first certified retirement community. And by the way, this would have been a lot longer, but I told Mr. Dormer to keep it to one page.
Well, I'm glad he did.
Whereas, Vice Mayor Hopkins has served with distinction, and is worthy of recognition from the community and his peers for his accomplishments as part of the City Council. Now therefore, the mayor and city councilors, and the citizens of Stillwater hereby recognize and express their appreciation for the dedication to duty and service performed by Vice Mayor Chuck Hopkins, who has continued a tradition of service that has made Stillwater a community of excellence in Oklahoma. Thank you very much.
We've got a little something special for you, too.
Thank you.
I'm going to show it to you first.
Alright. Well, great, thank you very much.
I'll let you show it to the group.
Some of the things that I hope I was involved with.
It is pictures of what Chuck stood for and worked on, and representative of his accomplishments while in City Council.
Everybody probably thinks that I just made up my mind one day to run for City Council, but since my wife is here with me tonight, she is the one that's responsible. This is my wife. And one day, she called me and said, "There's some people that wants to talk to you about running for the City Council." And I said, "Call them back and tell them blank, no." And then, I went home that night, and she said, "Now, you're always talking about serving on the city and doing something. I don't want to hear you complain anymore if you're not willing to take a position." And that is a true statement. So I did meet with a committee, and they talked me into running for City Council, and I'm glad that I did. So I'll try and talk to you without the mic. Only thing I'm going to say is that we've had a staff that's great to work with, and I didn't put all this down, but you can see what can be accomplished, and it wasn't just Chuck, it was the whole council that accomplished it. I've made statements as that I, in one sense, we went through some real strifes with the council, and on another sense, that I was glad I was there to be able to serve. So, you know, everything works out in the long run. And I know, I know, that new council members are going to do a good job also, so I'm leaving it in good hands. My bucket list, my wife may not know this, but I tell her often, I have two states in the nation I haven't visited. One of them is Rhode Island, and the other one's Delaware. And so, I want to visit those states, so therefore, we can vacation, and that's something else that we want to do, is take some time off and spend some time together. Now, if you want to see me on a lot of days, I rebuild old Mustangs, and I'm at 1013 South Jardot, and I have a '65 Mustang sitting there, completely painted, all the things are there, except I haven't touched it since I've been on the council. So, I want to go do that. So I wish you luck, and if there's any way I can help you, feel free to call on me, and the same thing goes for the city staff.
We are going to take a picture of...
We are going to take a, a picture of the City Council for the last year. So if you guys would come, kind of stand behind us and direct us as need be, please. Okay. Next, we're gonna move on to swearing in of new councilors. And first will be Pat Darlington.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your full name.
I, Pat Darlington.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or any other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Of the Office of City of Stillwater Counselor, Office Number Three.
Of the Office of City of Stillwater, City Counselor, Seat Office Number Three.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Always just steal one from someone. Okay. And there's two. You want, thank you.
Is that okay for the camera? Raise your right hand, you already got it raised. And repeat after me. I, please state your full name.
I, Bill O'Hara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
Performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
And I further swear.
And I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As trustee.
As.
Oh, they're trying to make you trustee of Stillwater Utilities.
Give her the right one.
No, the file is.
There's two of them. Right? This is City Council.
Good job, Miguel.
Tell me beforehand, sorry.
City of Stillwater Counselor.
City of Stillwater Counselor.
Office Number Four.
Office Number Four.
To the best of my.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Need to sign it. Sign it. My fault, I'm sorry. Then sign this one also.
Thank you.
All right, we've played a little musical chairs on the seniority front. And that makes Counselor Weaver the old man of the seat.
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations to two new councilors and, and thank you very much. Counselor Scott, Vice Mayor Hopkins, thank you very much again for your service.
My pleasure.
Very, very much appreciated.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That's going to take us down to election of Vice Mayor. And I nominate Counselor Joe Weaver as Vice Mayor.
Second.
Nomination and a second for Vice Mayor. He didn't say no.
Am I supposed to vote?
Yes. And that is approved five to nothing. Congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now it's time to get down to business. Do not have any requests for speaking not on public items, nothing removed from the consent docket. So it'll take us down to the first public hearing. Public hearing, item A, comment on proposed text amendments. Mr. Dorman, do we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Dennison.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Paula Dennison, Development Services. You have in your packets a report regarding the text amendment to the Land Development Code. The topic is parking. It's a thrilling opportunity for especially our new council members this evening. And congratulations and welcome to y'all. As y'all know, the parking was, a study was completed. And we have copies of the parking study. They are on the website as well, if anyone is interested. A few months back, we had a brief general orders item outlining the action items that came about from the parking study. And we also have a parking steering committee that is a group of citizens that is helping evaluate the study and take the action items and implement such. One of the steps is amendments to the Land Development Code where parking is concerned. There is an ordinance on tonight. It's ordinance number 3258 for first reading, which does outline all of the amendments that are proposed. I'm not gonna go through all of them. This is a very brief, this is step two in the initial three-step phase of the action items that staff, the steering committee and the parking consultant are bringing to you as the beginnings of implementing the parking study. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Like I said, I'm not gonna go through the entire ordinance for you this evening.
Would you, you want questions now or at ordinance time?
Either one is fine with me.
Any councilors have any questions, Ms. Dennison, before we open up the public hearing? All right, thank you. Well, we did not receive any request to speak in favor again. So we'll open up the public hearing and then we'll close the public hearing. And Ms. Dennison, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, the Planning Commission sends a unanimous recommendation for adoption of these changes to the Land Development Code parking article.
Are we looking for action now or just at ordinance stage?
At ordinance stage is fine.
All right. Any question, Ms. Dennison, before we move on? Thank you. That'll take us to our next public hearing. Item B, public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit. Mr. Dorman, did we get, have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Ms. Dennison.
Thank you. This is a specific use permit by Executive Residential Group for property addressed as 504 South Pine Street. The area outlined in red is the existing property. This is in an area zoned RTM, which is our lowest dense multifamily residential. It's the two and light multifamily residential zoning district. And it currently has a single-family house located on it. This is the site plan for the property that is associated with the specific use permit. In the RTM, the multifamily zoning districts, a conventional single-family structure requires the specific use permit. Because it's not typically, you're more dense, higher impact that the multifamily allows for. So there's a little non-compatibility with the zoning and this intended use. Therefore, the SUP. As you can see, the property is 50 by 120. There are five parking spaces proposed. And this is a large, single-family detached residential home that has two access points for the driveway off of Pine Street. This is a front elevation of the structure. And I took a shot just down two parcels south of this one into consideration is the exact same floor plan, the same property owner, the same development they came through with an SUP a couple of years back. So this is an actual rendering of what this property will look like. And this is the house that is on the property currently, to give you an idea. Single-family is allowed in RTM, as I said, with an SUP. It will allow the construction of seven-bedroom house. There are five parking spaces proposed. Single-family house only requires two. And the applicant is proposing the five, as, as you've seen on the site plan. The surrounding neighborhood has just a variety of residential uses. I'll be happy to answer any questions of this application at this time.
Questions, council?
I'm wondering, under proposes five parking spaces, is, is the applicant held to five parking spaces if this is approved?
Yes, ma'am. Although the code only requires two for this type of structure, because the specific use permit does require a site plan and it's indicated on the site plan for the five parking spaces, the site plan is actually tied to the approval from the City Council. So the five shown will be required unless the council chooses to alter that any.
Up or down?
Up or down, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Would you go back to the other man?
Tony?
Yeah, help me, orient me to the property and what's around it.
Single-family structures are all the way around it, both sides of Pine Street and on Walnut. Off of, to the west, past Walnut, the half-block behind Walnut begins the Westwood Overlay.
Right, so we're still.
So we're east of the overlay, yes, sir.
Okay. Where is that other property that you showed us the picture of?
It's this 510.
Okay, thank you.
The two lots south, yes, sir.
Is the A.O. Paice Sorority House one block to the east?
Fifth And, yes. Thank you, Tom.
What's the, what's the limit? Like, how many rooms can you have in a single? I mean, seven bedrooms seems like a lot for a single-family home.
The num, the size of the house is.
Well, just city code. I mean, how many people can you have? How many bedrooms can you per se have in a single? Because it's still being a single-family, correct? It's just a specific use for a single-family?
It is being constructed as a single-family structure, a single solitary unit.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. In this zoning district, a duplex could have been built. A triplex or even a fourplex could have been built. One of the things about this property, it's only 50 by 120. So the narrow shotgun-style duplex or multifamily would have been the only option. And probably quite a bit taller in order to get this number of occupants in that number of units. Because multifamily would have had to have been separated for the individual units with kitchen, bath, sleeping in each one.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Again, we do not have any requests to speak in favor again. So we'll, we do, the applicant is here. Does the applicant wish to, to speak?
Were available for comment here, honorably.
Wonderful, thank you. So we'll open up the public hearing and we'll close the public hearing. And Ms. Dennison, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, Planning Commission did review this and they recommend approval of the request as presented with five parking spaces as identified on the site plan.
Thank you very much. At this point, with recommendation made, are there any other questions that we would have for Ms. Dennison or the developer? I guess I should say applicant, excuse me. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. There a motion on this, on this recommendation?
Well, I would be happy to make a motion to approve based on Planning Commission's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Planning Commission's recommendation. And that is approved five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'll take us down to public hearing, item C. Mr. Dorman?
There has been a request to continue this item to the next City Council meeting based upon the unavailability of the applicant tonight. Their applicant's representative is here if you have questions or anything.
So it is the applicant's request to postpone? Okay, so we need a motion to postpone the public hearing?
To the, would be the 21st, I believe is the next meeting date.
So moved.
Motion, a second. And that is approved five to zero. We'll take that up on the 21st. Okay, it'll take us down to general orders. Ms. Galway, is this issue?
No, it's Dr. Peake, Transportation Director. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here before you tonight to give you an update on the half-cent transportation sales tax and with the request to allocate the remaining budget for this fiscal period, FY14. In your, your council report, to provide a little background and history, as many of you know, this half-cent sales tax was originally passed in 2001 with a specific list of transportation projects that those funds would be used for. Up until this time, we've completed all of those projects that were in that initial 2001 recommendation, except the intersection at Western Road and Hall of Fame. That was a specific project listing to signalize that intersection. That project is what we call currently incomplete. It was let or advertised for bid back in 2005 and no bids were received at that time. To date, on all the designated projects, we spent about $35 million through that half-cent sales tax. The voters were asked to approve and extend that sales tax in 2006, which they did through referendum with one caveat. They added a lot of programmatic types of listings or categories that the sales tax funds could be used for in addition to those projects that were identified in 2001. Those types of programs are listed in your council report. And that's kind of what we're here to talk about tonight. Where we sit today, the sales tax receipts for the, the past couple of years have been favorable for the sales tax program as well as the estimated expenditures in the projects that we've let in the past three years have been less than what we actually programmed. So right now, in FY14, we're standing on 3.3 million of an unallocated balance in this. this current fiscal period. So the report to you tonight is, is giving a listing of projects with amounts to allocate, basically designate for those projects. Priority number one would be to start a revised design on the, the Western Road intersection. That was one of the original projects listed in the 2001 sales tax initiative, so that would program 300,000 for that. To back up a little bit, two projects were added specifically to the sales tax program. That was Country Club Road. That's basically the widening and reconstruction of the intersection at Sixth Avenue, and it's a joint project with the county. And so we received bids through ODOT for that back in February. The bid estimates came in higher than our program estimates, so we're asking for additional monies to be programmed for that when it's rebid this May. We're asking for some additional money. We're in the process for right-of-way acquisition on Sixth Avenue and Perkins Road. This is a joint project with ODOT where we will reconstruct the bridges there near Stillwater Milling. We will widen to add turn lanes at the intersection, and we're currently in the right-of-way and easement acquisition phase. The next project is for bridge maintenance. In this fiscal period, you approve funds for developing bridge maintenance plans on about seven bridges. We've gotten those estimates done. That's about a million dollars in maintenance and repairs needed to bridge bridges throughout town. One example is the, the old Truss Bridge over by the Botanic Garden. We've got to do something about that wooden deck and address some of the steel issues out there. The next project is to start on design work for Perkins Road. Now, this is a, on a state route, ODOT has committed funding in 2020 for improvements on Perkins Road between McElroy and Lakeview. The sooner we can start the design process on that project and get plans ready for that, we can work with ODOT to move up that funding date. And the last couple of projects that I wanted to talk about was Sanger Road. As many of you that are already on council know about our pavement management program, we've been funding through the general fund, our pavement management, where we just work on improving the streets. We're not adding capacity, sidewalks, drainage, we're just taking care of the pavement. Sanger Road between Sixth Avenue and 19th is one of those roads this year that's in deferred maintenance. We're going to do some heavy patching to basically continue the operation of that road, but it's one that's nearing reconstruction. It's also identified in our master transportation plan for widening improvements. And then the, the last new project to add is what we call the traffic signal management system. This is basically targeted at our traffic signals. We have about 64 signalized intersections in the city of Stillwater. Most people don't know, but those signals, for the most part, operate independently of any computer network. If a signal has a problem, goes into flash, we don't know about it here at the office until someone calls us and actually tells that's what's going on with the signal. So one part of this provides a software to manage the information flow of those signal systems. The other part of what it does is it allows us to better coordinate signals for traffic flow. A lot of the congestion issues we experience in this town is more at our signal management than it is the actual lane capacity that we have out there. So that would provide funding for software and the upgrades to the signal systems to communicate to our Wi-Fi mesh system. And then the remaining balance of this year, funds in FY14, we would designate for construction of the Western and Hall of Fame project. And then what you'll see soon in the FY15 request is all the sales tax money in FY15 that's available for programs would be designated for construction of Western and Hall of Fame, which would be consistent with a referendum. So basically, tonight, we're seeking a recommend, or asking you to accept our recommendation to designate the remaining FY14 funds for these specific project categories.
Questions for Dr. Peake?
Maybe not a question. I'm really pleased to see the traffic signal management software being purchased. That's been sorely needed, and that's a good project. Will it, how long will it take to implement that?
We estimate about a year. I mean, once you, once you...
Would that include all 60-plus?
It won't, we won't be able to get all 64 signals. That will get us about 50 of the signalized intersections. We'll primarily focus on our core system, Sixth Avenue, Perkins Road, Duck and Main Street. The outlined signal systems, you know, would, would come on later because they're not as much a part of the coordinated system.
Also pleased to see the Western Avenue, we've delayed that, deferred that.
Yes, sir.
It's good to see that on the docket that we're starting to move on it.
I have a question. I don't know who to direct it to, though, but I, I put, I kind of listed as you were going, I did priority number four, and you said something about designing, spending more money on the design on Perkins Road, which is a partnership with state ODOT money. And I know recently they announced, obviously, that the education, they were going to take money from the state men, or roads to put in education. And so will that affect this at all? And should we be focusing money on that if they're possibly would delay it more?
The, it depends on where ODOT specifically, their, their capital funding. They have an eight-year plan.
Okay.
And they program that money out over eight years. I'm not sure how the, the current proposal would reduce that. You know, it could be that if they're using other funds, federal funds, it may not be an impact, but I, I can't tell you with a straight face that it wouldn't. I mean, we know we're facing the, the same thing with the federal funds or federal government. The MAP 21 funds that we use in the state is facing insolvency this summer. And unless Congress does something, that could drastically affect ODOT as well. Right now, all we know is they have a commitment to fund the project in 2020. We'll have to wait and see what happens. If for any other reason, this is one of our corridors with the highest accident frequency in town. We have seven times the accidents on that one-mile section of corridor than any other similar corridor statewide. So, I mean, from a transportation department perspective, it's important to move forward on that. We've got to do something, whether the funding comes from state or other sources. We need to get to work on design.
And you're saying the one-mile corridor is between McElroy and Lakeview on Perkins? You had said that we, if we make the plans, we might be able to move it up from 2020?
Yes, so what, what happens with ODOT, I mean, similar to us, they budget every year for their capital plan. This is how much they have available. Like all road projects, they go through a design, right-of-way, utility relocation, and then let bids for construction. If any one of those factors lag statewide and they're not spending that money is designated, that money can go through what's called rebalancing and be appropriated to other projects that are within that eight-year plan. So if something is ready to move and there's money available for it, we can move with money in that current year.
When would you like to see us start on this?
Well, so our goal would be if you approve this tonight, we have to go through a design consultant selection process for all the engineering design services that's required by state statute. That process takes about 30 to 45 days to basically advertise, interview, select consultants. So we really wouldn't be able to start design, you know, say until June or July of this year, but we could at least get the process started. Typical design, if we're not acquiring right-of-way and moving utilities, can be completed within one year's time. So you could theoretically, you don't have to acquire right-of-way out there, have plans done for Perkins Road by about this time next year.
Do we have to, I'm sorry. Do we have to acquire right-of-way on both sides of Perkins, all the way down?
The initial traffic study we looked at, we have a lot of right-of-way. The one concern is basically the apartment complex is just north of Aldi and west of Red Bud. The right-of-way is a little bit narrow in there. We know we need to look at a turn lane at, at Red Bud and Perkins Road. That's the signal just north of the Aldi. We may be able to accommodate that by going to what we call a curb and gutter section, putting the drainage and pipes. I mean, it raises the cost, but it minimizes having to relocate utilities sometimes and acquire right-of-way. So that'll be one of the things we look at.
Sure. Any other questions for Dr. Peake on this item? Okay, and so, and the recommendation was for us to approve those plans?
Basically, to approve the, you basically would be designating these funds for these project categories, and that's how finance would work to set up the project accounts and those budgets in this fiscal period commensurate with the report.
Wonderful. Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Peake?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this recommendation?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve this recommendation. And that is approved, five to zero. That'll take us down to resolutions, and we're going to hold this resolution until after the CDA meeting, is that what we need to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're going to jump down to ordinances, and the first ordinance is ordinance 3257. Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance relating to public health and safety revising the 911 emergency number ordinance, section five, emergency telephone service and fee, thereby maintaining the current 5% user fee established and declaring an emergency.
Okay, so we're looking, actually, at two motions on this, or the emergency would be second reading, correct?
That would be, yes, one second reading.
So right now, it's just a motion on this ordinance?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion on ordinance 3257? Actually, are there any questions I should ask?
I had a couple of questions that I think were answered, but I wondered how long we'd had this fee and...
1989, is that correct?
And, and does it, is it a fee on cell phone and landline or just one or the other?
Actually, the first 911 ordinance that was passed was April the 4th, 1989, so 25 years and three days ago. And it was to implement E-911. At that time, cell phones were not considered. There was no fee on cell phones. They were pretty much a luxury, and not many people had them. And the fees were designed to be able to recover costs for equipment, the installation and training and staffing of 911 centers. And we implemented the revenue a little different than other cities. State statute allowed 5% fee on every phone line that went to an address. So if you had 100 phones in a simplex system at one address, all of those would get the fee. Stillwater did a little differently, and we charged 57 cents per address, which at that time was 5% of a basic phone bill. And it's considerably different today. But as time has passed and after the passage of countywide 911, which occurred in 2002, and it was in April of 2002, cell phone fees, which is 50 cents per phone, and 5% of landlines that exist anywhere outside the city limits, all go to the county. And the county then pays the bill for a lion's share of the equipment that exists to provide 911 services countywide. And the reason that was done is it saved the taxpayers a little over $2 million in consolidating that into one giant system rather than to having one for Yale and Cushing and Stillwater and... But anyway, our number of landlines has been greatly reduced over the years because everybody's converting to just cell phones and frequently just a home phone now, a cellphone. So our revenue has dropped. And to give you an idea, the equipment in 1989 and the salaries totaled, salaries to implement that equipment, which is three dispatchers position, totaled $291,161. Today, that same system, the down payment is a quarter of a million dollars. The cost for those same three dispatchers is 202,500 with benefits and roll-ups and all those things. So if the question is, we maintain that 5% fee every year because it most closely matches what we spend on the system in terms of cost recovery. And, and obviously, the general fund makes a generous donation because we're up to 14 dispatchers at a cost of roughly $950,000 a year. The general fund makes a generous contribution to maintaining that center and the equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion on ordinance 3257?
I move that we accept ordinance 3257, that we approve ordinance 3257, sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That's approved, five to zero. That'll take us down to ordinance 3258.
An ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 8, Parking and Loading Standards, Division 1, Generally, Section 23-210, Purpose, Applicability Regulations, and Section 23-211, Design Standards, and by amending Division 2, Space Requirements, Section 23-220, Required Spaces.
Okay, actually, Ms. Dennison, I, now that we're here at the ordinance stage, there was just a whole lot of underline and redline going on here. It's isn't so much a specific question, but more of a conceptual question. What I took from this is we are modernizing our parking standards so that everything doesn't have to be built to accommodate a duly with big, wide rearview mirrors.
Correct.
And it does allow for different types of parking spaces for different types of vehicles.
Correct.
And this is very much an outcome of our parking study to help modernize the way we do things. Is that a proper interpretation?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Does this add spaces to everything or does this reduce our concrete footprint or...
Overall, the majority is a reduction. We have a large article in here about shared parking facilities. If you have multiple uses on a piece of property, instead of building 100% spaces for one use and 100% for another, you can share the space, the number of spaces. So therefore, it is reduced. We have opportunities for motorcycle and scooter parking that the mayor was referring to, for compact car parking spaces. Even parking garages, the spaces are reduced primarily because you have posts and support structures in there, and they're mostly private, those parking garages that are being built now are. So overall, it is going to be a reduction. There may be some of the space requirements in the actual, what's your use, this is how many spaces you have to have, that may be adjusted a little higher, but for the most part, there's going to be a reduction in the paved or concrete surface because we also have written in here the permeable surfaces that is an allowance as well.
Just to help me orient, would this, had these been in place when we were looking at those high-density apartment complexes with the garages attached? I remember we had discussions about how wide the, you know, the requirements were. Wouldn't this solve and eliminate the need for those discussions like we had on those high-rise projects?
Absolutely, and that, this is one of the things that the steering committee in the parking study had not identified, but with staff working with them brought it to their attention.
Good.
Could, let's say, someone who's building a new development ask for more parking spaces if it wasn't allowed in this?
This is, what's identified in here is just the minimum that they're required to provide. They can provide additional, just as the SUP that you had earlier this evening. He chose to provide additional spaces for that piece of property and that use that he had. The, there is a provision in here to where, in certain areas of town, there can be a requested reduction in the number of spaces that's required, and you wouldn't have to go to the board of adjustment.
Just out of curiosity, Paul, it, the, you know, the walking distance went from 600 to 1,320 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Are those arbitrary numbers or how do you get those?
No, ma'am, there was, that actually came out of the parking study and the steering committee because of typical block distances and multi-blocks from... of typical block distances and multi-blocks from, and we used Oklahoma State University as an example. They have areas of parking, and the distance to walk from those areas of parking to where you're needing to go to falls into, not 660 feet, but more than 1,300-foot range.
Would there be handicap accommodations?
Yes, ma'am. Anytime there is a development that comes along, then there are handicap space requirements for all parking lots, and that also is covered in here.
But those would be moved, those could be 1,300 feet instead of...
The 1,300 feet is for public parking that you can utilize to count toward your individual requirements that you, as a developer, must install, own or adjacent to your property. So that's where that comes into play.
Thank you.
On this, it says that on-street parking in public spaces may count toward the minimum parking requirements. Does that mean that, like the gentleman we approved earlier for the seven-bedroom, he could include spaces off-street as the minimum requirement, or on-street, I'm sorry?
If there are designated public parking spaces. Primarily, you're gonna have those in the highly-developed commercial areas, downtown, the strip, campus corner, is where you'll see most of the marked spaces on the right-of-way.
So we're not gonna run into that problem with, in neighborhoods?
Not typically, we're not, because very few of those are actually marked.
Okay.
There may be a consideration or an allowance that if the street's wide enough, they can park on one side or both in some cases. What this does allow, that you can use some of the public parking for your private calculations, but you have to demonstrate that it's available and out there.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Discussion? Ready for a motion on ordinance 3258? Oh, I haven't asked for a recommendation, have I?
Planning Commission's all for it.
Okay.
So is staff and steering committee and parking consultant.
That was back on the, that was back on public hearing.
Okay. What was the planning commission vote again?
Six-zero, if I recall correctly. It was unanimous vote.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance, whatever that is. 3258. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve 3258. That is approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dinsen. Okay. Takes us down to... Mr. Dorman.
One item tonight, sir. Request an executive session pursuant to 25 O.S., subsection 307b4, for the purpose of confidential communication regarding a pending worker compensation claim filed by Jennifer Gripe. It is my opinion that public disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process this claim and/or conduct an investigation or prosecute or defend any resulting litigation proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Galloway?
Just briefly, I, school board member here, I've had several questions about the SRO agreement. It's still pending, the board's approval tomorrow. But just to give you a real quick overview, last year and this current year, Stillwater Public Schools have provided 25% of the cost of the three SRO laws. And that was scheduled by earlier agreements to increase to 50% in the coming year, and I think that was part of the budgetary considerations. I think those were totally unexpected. I've met with the administration, and the agreement that the board will be looking at will be to continue at the 25% rate for an additional year where they cope with the budget issues. And we went through similar budget issues back in '08 and '09, so we can certainly relate to what that's like. And I hope that that is something that the schools can work with, and we planned that in our budget. And, you know, it was just, it was just an unfortunate thing. Both the schools and the city are fully committed to the safety of our children, the schools, obviously, and we were gonna find some way to work it out, and we hope this works. And had a couple of calls saying, what's the terms of the agreement? That's basically what we have agreed to.
But still, we left open the notion that when budgets improve, we can resume our original agreement?
Yes, that's, that is...
Still on the table?
That's still on the table, yes, sir.
We had a deal.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Galloway?
That's all right.
Okay. Ms. Leans, items from city council.
Councilor Darlington. Sounds kinda cool, doesn't it?
Yeah. I didn't think I'd do this on the first night. I understand that there is a citywide housing study being conducted by the city staff, and I'm wondering what it would look like to ask that we put a hold on zoning changes for rental housing, to give us a chance to study the market, analyze what's going on in the city with housing.
Ms., she brought up the housing study. What's the status of that?
Staff is, just this week, actually, timing is everything, just this week, we are getting together to finalize a draft. And the draft, we will be discussing with the city manager's office prior to bringing it to the full council. So we're looking at, hopefully, early June, probably want to do a study session if that's available, council's wishes, of course, to do a study session or not. But the information in the housing study is going to be very interesting and maybe a little shocking.
All right.
But we'll be able, we'll be happy to consider anything that comes out of the study session before the full study is recognized and adopted by the council.
Can you tell me what the housing study entails, or what are you studying?
We are studying supply, we're studying demand, we're studying income necessary to purchase a home, we're studying occupancy, is it rental or is it owner-occupied? And we're even studying commuter patterns to see if we even have enough housing and what type of housing for the number of jobs that are in Stillwater proper.
So this is for permanent residents type of...
Study of all housing.
All housing.
All housing.
All housing.
We even have information from OSU and their, their housing that's provided on campus. So a lot of information in it.
Thank you.
And you're saying that'll be done in June, probably?
Yes. Hopefully, we can schedule a time to, to review it with the...
Draft of the findings, to have a study session with council, discuss, let you have time to review it, ask questions, give us guidance on what else you wanna see done in the plan, and that'll kick off. We have some other study sessions between now and then, but they're already booked for budget.
Budget between now and then.
Well, we've talked for several years about the need to do this study and the fact that we, you know, we look at developments and we'd like to have a feel for, is there a need, or, you know, how great is the need for development in various locations? It's not a zoning study, it's more a capacity study.
Yes.
So it's been needed for quite some time.
Well, I mean, that answers the question about the study. I don't know if there's a possibility of, you know, putting a hold on zoning changes for rental property or not, but I would like to think about that.
Okay. Thank you. I wrote it down, too.
Okay.
Anything else from other councillors?
Yeah, I would, I don't normally speak up at this time. I just wanted to say councillor Hopkins was the guy that asked me to consider running for council a few years ago, and I've never said that publicly because I wanted to protect his reputation for being blamed for me being on the council, but he was a great friend and a good mentor, and I served longest with him, even you, by one month, because you had to go to the general.
Yeah.
But I just respect Chuck, and we're gonna miss him.
You guys got any comments?
We will miss both councillors, Chuck and Cody. And welcome to Pat and Mika, our councillor Darlington and councillor Erin.
Thank you.
Councillor, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. You guys anything, got anything for upcoming meetings?
Budget.
We got budget coming.
Yep. Next study session probably be April 28th, that'll be the Monday after our next regular meeting. We should be able to, we will present you a balanced budget, and hopefully it contains what you would like to do this coming year. And I think, I think it reflects some input we got from our public input this year, so... We're still tweaking it, it's not totally balanced yet, so it's a little give and take, but we're getting close.
All right. We're going to, we don't have any appointments, so we're gonna recess city council, and then I'm going to call to order the special meeting for the Stillwater Economic Development Authority for April 7th, 2014, and grab that agenda. And on that agenda, we have three items on the consent docket. Does anybody wish to remove any item from the consent docket?
Move approval of the consent.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the consent docket. All right. The consent docket is approved, five to zero. That'll take us down to general orders. Mr. Galloway?
First item, we, as most of you know, we have, for several years, had agreements since we created the bid district to try to incentivize new business development in our bid district as well as expanding businesses. And recently, a couple months ago, I had an application for an expansion of a business in Stillwater. We've been fortunate to have a Stillwater hometown Sears store for several years, it's been on a shopping center on East Sixth. They chose to expand the Sears store in our downtown. Again, we don't incentivize people to just relocate in the community, but what we have always said, if somebody wants to make an investment to expand their business, they're gonna do more sales, we establish the average sales that we have reported in the state for that business for the last few years, and that establishes a baseline. We then would incentivize only on the new increment of increased sales they're going to generate. So this is a proposed agreement with the Sears hometown store on South Main, 10th and Main. It would be a rebate incentive in arrears of 1%, equivalent of 1% of the sales tax for up to a period of seven years or until they've achieved $25,000, whichever occurs first. I looked at their business plan and their projections for growth above and beyond, and I think it's a good agreement. I think it's, it's exactly the same format of the other agreements we've used in the bid district, and I would recommend it's approved.
I was gonna ask you, is it similar or close to the other agreements that we've issued?
Yes, we've used the exact same requirements for these other... It's the second, we've had earlier an expansion agreement, and the summit expanded.
Any questions for Mr. Galloway on this item?
So if something happened, now I withdraw my question. You're good, I'm good.
They don't get any money up front.
There we go, yeah.
For example, if their business, if their sales don't grow, they don't get anything. But they, they only share in what's created.
The incremental, the incremental growth.
That's why it's, we're a little riddled with zero business.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Galloway on this item? Is there a motion on this item?
I would move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. And that is approved, five to zero. And that'll take us down to resolutions.
Okay. This resolution per se, I'm gonna ask to table it subject to call, because we're still working on some details in, with a business development agreement, but I do want to give you a little background. Three of the council members have had the benefit of discussing this project as it's developed in some prior executive sessions because there is some proprietary information involved. I have tried to meet with both trustee Nahara and trustee Darlington to give them a little bit of an update. I can tell you this, there, there is a major retail shopping center developer from Alabama who has been seeking locations in Stillwater for the development of a approximately 12-acre shopping center. They would have a couple of big-box type stores as well as several pad sites for small store or restaurants. We, it appears to be a very solid project, we've looked at it. We've also been working with an attorney at the Center for Economic Development Law in Oklahoma City. I have on retainer, Mr. Dan Bachelor, he has worked with communities throughout the state on development agreements. The, the state statutes were modified several years ago and some changes to the constitution to create a specific process for entering these types of agreements with developers. What we're contemplating on this agreement is, and I'll give you some round numbers just to get a grasp of the project. When this project is developed, it's projected that it will do a tremendous amount of retail sales, something in the neighborhood of $40 million plus of sales per year when you take all of the stores in the business. That will generate, over a period of 10 years, about $9 to $10 million new revenue to the city. And the, the key thing is that these types of retail stores are not something that's currently available in Stillwater. So it's not capturing from other businesses, these are types of business that do not exist here presently, and people are currently going to toss it up on the city and other communities for. So we're looking at that. The way this is done to, to do these type, and again, people should remember, we're not offering to, to provide any cash to this company to do any of this development, but it is a way that the city can partner, create a partnership with this development whereby, in essence, if they create new sales tax flow for the city for a period of a few years, we share some portion of that as a partnership in the cost to help offset the public improvements they'll have to make. They will make, at their 12-acre site, they'll be making improvements to the intersections on the public streets, traffic signals possibly, infrastructure, water, sewer, electrical installations, all of those will become public assets. Those are a part, those are partly the reason why we would participate. Again, the, the specific numbers on this are being worked out. For CETA, you try, as trustees, to enter this agreement with this company, of course, you will see all of the details of it, it will require, again, the city council to initiate a process to create what is commonly called as a TIF district. This will be a sales tax TIF. And again, the acronym TIF stands for Tax Increment Finance. And what we're saying is if you create a TIF district, state law provides that this new increment of income that we receive from sales tax, you can share a portion of that increment in a partnership to incentivize and enable the project to develop. And that's, that's kind of an overview of how the process works. Again, we have gone through six or seven drafts of the agreement, we're getting very, very close. The terms of the agreement would, would have, will come back to the council, they'll have an opportunity to review their projected cost of development, projected sales tax revenue before we enter any agreement. But again, the precursor before you can enter the agreement will be the creation of the TIF district. So again, I want to table this agreement for a matter of a few days until we can get this nailed down and bring it back to you. Again, we will probably have a short executive session, only to protect proprietary information, we will reveal publicly... We will reveal publicly the terms of the agreement, of course. But I will recommend when you reconvene into, into City Council, and I'll be recommending to the City Council, those other folks that sit up here, that you initiate the process of the TIFF district formation. That process takes 60 days plus. Originally, we were hoping to get the timeline moving quickly enough that these new retail stores would be open for the 2014 holiday shopping season. Because of the time it takes to create the TIFF, it's now looking like those would probably be new stores opening in Stillwater in February of 2015, which is still a very, very short timeline, less than a year from now. But again, we need to keep the process moving. I will note that this developer also has contingent contracts on other portions of land in Stillwater, and he has more interest in our community than one shopping center will handle. We, we are getting a lot of inquiries from around the country, from national chains, not just through this developer, but directly to our office. And it's going to take the development of properties to accommodate those new opportunities. So, that's kind of an overview of where we are, and why this is on here this evening.
Couple, couple questions. First, and it really, do I understand this properly? Here in CEDA, with the item that's on the agenda here, a development agreement between CEDA and a very specific named developer?
Yes.
That is an economic development agreement, much like we just talked about with Sears?
That's correct.
Now, the TIFF district that we're going to talk about in City Council, that's the larger vehicle that could be utilized, not just with this?
That's correct.
Okay. So they're two distincts?
In this case, the particular TIFF district we're creating is only for this 12 acres.
Okay, geographically.
You can, by state law, if you have a broader area with multiple possibilities for developers, you can create a larger TIFF district, which gives you the ability to then develop separate development agreements within the TIFF.
Okay.
In this case, because of the zoning and the land use around the area proposed on North Perkins, there's not another area that lends itself to, to other retail development, it's kind of a filling. So it would be more appropriate to create the TIFF for those 12 acres.
So this TIFF happens to only have the possibility of one development agreement coming out of it, whereas TIFFs in general, you can do others?
For example, when we presented kind of our economic development law proposal about four years ago, at the community center and the study station, we showed maps of four different retail development areas in Stillwater. This falls in one of those, which is up on North Perkins, which is already, to a large standard, is developed. One of the, the priority area we showed was all of the commercial property west of Stillwater Creek, along Highway 51. There are multiple five to 10 to 20 to 40 acre tracks inside the city limits, along Highway 51, Sixth Street, on the west side. We may at some point be beneficial to look at all or parts of that as TIFF districts for future development.
And you could do individual agreements after that?
Yes.
Okay. My next question, I just want to make sure this is absolutely understood by everyone. We're talking sales tax.
Sales tax only, not property.
Sales tax only. So, the school district does not get any sales tax, do they?
No, sir.
So, this agreement could not impair any revenue going to the school district because of it, could it?
It could not, it would not impair any taxes going to the school district.
It could actually.
In fact, as those properties are developing, their assessed values go up considerably. It's going to increase revenues to the school.
Wonderful. Just want to make sure we all understand?
Increase revenues to the county, and increase revenues to Meridian Technology Center.
Yes, we're talking sales tax. Okay.
You, you referenced a pending executive session, I'd like to have one sooner than later, to get the new councilors up to speed on the deal.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And not do it, you know, you said a short executive session, it might need to be a little bit longer executive session, because it's a complicated.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to have it in as short order as possible.
Okay, short order, I didn't understand.
I would really, if, if the council starts the TIFF appropriate, uh, process, I, I would hate to impose on anybody, but I would, it's possible I might request you to have a special meeting of CEDA, so we can have that executive session and consider the agreement. Reason being, the developer currently has contracts pending on this land, and he has a due date in May to close, or to make payment to the owner to extend the closing date. It's imperative for him to know the status of the city, whether we're going, planning to be partners or not. And so if we have an agreement, a development agreement, that's, again, agreeable to both parties, that gives him the, the go-ahead to start securing that. Again, it doesn't commit us to the final agreement completely, but it commits us to, to the final agreement if the developer complies with all the stipulations that we put in, in the process. Is that, is that, that's an oversimplification, Mr. Dorman.
Well, there's, there's a project plan that is the end result of all of this, and until you approve the project plan under the TIFF statute, we're not fully in.
It's not done.
You're not fully committed, though, I understand.
Trustee Harris, you have something?
Yeah, could we, and I'll, I'll stress this, because I don't want people to think I don't know what we're talking about. I know what we're talking about, because we spent a lot of time in the past couple of days talking about this, but I know the general public doesn't. Is there a way we could have the chamber, or the Stillwater Economic Director, Developer Director, talk about this, or tell the importance of these type of TIFF districts and the Sears con, I mean, because, you know, I think that's, that's a problem, is that maybe, you know, the general public, unless they spend a lot of time looking at this stuff, don't understand it. And I, for one, I think it's very vital, I think it's key, and, but once again, I've spent a lot of time at the chamber recently, a lot of time at the city, learning about these things, and so I know how key they are, but I don't think the general public, per se.
You're saying the whole city's not watching this tonight?
I am saying, I'm saying something like that. But I just think it would be, and obviously I don't want to delay the vote, but I think it'd be beneficial, maybe the chamber, or, you know, the economic developer director could, could discuss, maybe, I don't know where, what setting that could be, or when that could be, but, I mean, a study session, I'm hearing, so. But I think it's, it's important to make sure that people are understanding.
Yeah, I think, you know, and again, in-house, Angela McLaughlin, our Economic Development Director for Retail, and I work with her, and we can present that, and I'm sure the chamber could probably provide some support information on how, how these work as well. We can try to do that along with, with the session, yes. So there's, there are some misunderstandings out there, I've, I've talked with you, I think maybe you had some before you came on, of some of our past agreements. We don't give existing money to a business as an incentive. We just don't do that. All, what we're really saying is, if you make an investment in our community and start creating new income for us, we'll give you a little discount on that income you're creating for us for a few years. So it's a win-win. Every one of these agreements, we wind up making additional revenue for city services, not spending.
Any other questions on, okay, we're not, we obviously, we are not voting on this item tonight, because it's not ready for us to discuss, or to vote on. So any other questions on this topic?
One question. You referenced several times, it was on North Perkins Road, can you be any, can you say where it is, or do you have to wait?
Yeah, I think I can say where it is. It's at the northeast corner of Perkins and Lincoln. There's 11.83 acres on that corner, it's immediately north of Batwoods, and it's an undewed out of the corner, and that would be the location.
Okay, thank you.
There's nothing further on that, or is there a motion to adjourn CEDA?
I move to adjourn CEDA.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn CEDA. That is approved, five to zero. CEDA is adjourned, we will reconvene City Council, and that'll take us back to resolutions, and we have Resolution CC 2014-3. And so this is the big picture TIFF district.
This is, this is the TIFF district.
Okay.
And what I'm recommending this evening is, is the council would consider adoption of this resolution. This resolution would authorize a creation of the TIFF committee, which is, do you recall the makeup of that committee, Mr. Dorman?
Will be a member from the City Council, a member from the Planning Commission, a member from the taxing entity, which is the city at large, and they then will pick three additional members from a group of nominees submitted by the, I believe, the mayor.
And that committee would, would, would work with us and review the, this project, its requirements, it would review how the TIFF district would operate, that, they will develop a plan for that TIFF district. It would be presented to the City Council, it'd be a public hearing on it, after it's presented, explain how it would be formed, how it would work, so it's a public hearing. The committee goes back and works with that, I believe there's a second public hearing required before it's completed?
The Planning Commission has a role in this as well, the, well, as I read the resolution, you're, we're declaring the intent to consider approval of a project plan, so we're just expressing intent here.
Does, does this resolution create a TIFF district?
No, sir.
No.
It starts the process, is all it does.
You can't create the TIFF district until you've gone through the entire process. What this intent does, would basically give us a green light to begin to formulate that committee, to begin to develop a plan, to begin the review process, to prepare items for the Planning Commission to review, but this body to review is, again, that whole process takes 60 days plus.
Right.
And so we need to get started. But it won't be until the end of that period of time that you actually vote to create a district.
Got it.
And we'll have numerous opportunities to discuss.
Absolutely.
Point here and there.
All the details of this will be presented publicly.
Gotcha. Okay. Back to City Councils, so councilors, any questions on this resolution? Conversation or discussion on this resolution? All right, are we ready to make a motion on this resolution?
Motion to approve Resolution CC 2014-3.
We have a motion?
And a second.
And we have a second. And that is approved, five to zero, on that resolution. Okay. That'll take us down to, we do have an executive session that's been requested, so that takes us down to number 17 on your agenda. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
Motion to move into executive session.
Second.
A motion, second, for executive session. Do what you need to do. That is approved, five to zero.
We have to come back, we have to.
City of Stillwater Television transmits programming 24 hours each day throughout the Stillwater and surrounding area on Sunday Communications Channel 23 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. The purpose of the station is to provide the latest news and information about Stillwater City Government and its services, as well as information on city events. Live broadcasts of the Stillwater City Council, Stillwater Utilities Authority, Stillwater Economic Development Authority, and Stillwater Planning Commission air on this station, and replays of these meetings can be found here daily and on demand at stillwater.org. For more information or if you have questions, contact the Office of Marketing and Public Relations at 405-742-8362, or email news@stillwater.org.
Mark your calendars for the 37th Daniel Stillwater Arts Festival, held in downtown Stillwater on April 19th and 20th. Come out on Saturday, April 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, April 20th from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and enjoy the arts festival featuring many local and regional artists, food vendors, live entertainment, and more. Admission to the festival is free. The Stillwater Arts Festival is organized and presented by the City of Stillwater, held rain or shine.
Hi, Stillwater. My name is Rob Hill, and I'm the Emergency Management Technician for the City of Stillwater. And today I'd like to talk to you about storm sirens and our outdoor warning systems for the City of Stillwater, and what it means to you as a resident. Lots of times after we have an activation, we receive phone calls in our office about why I can't hear the storm sirens in my house. Well, let's cover that.